At this time, we open the floor to public comments on agenda items. Are there any public comments on agenda items? There being none, we move to presentations.
All right, thank you. We have two presentations this evening. The first one will start out with recognizing outstanding staff members with our Diamond Awards. So I am going to ask Dr. Berger, who nominated Mr. Kibler for a Diamond Award, to please come on up. Look at that, Spencer.
Thank you so much. Tonight, I would like to nominate the LAX new teacher.
Kibler for the way he teaches and instills a love for music with our students. Mr. Kibler plans and organizes incredible concerts for our community. His creativity and his connections with students has created a love for performing and a love for the power of music. Teaching students that music can send powerful messages, bring us joy, and impact social emotional learning and development. Students look forward to coming to his class and appreciate the work Mr. Kibler prepares for them. He also teaches students the importance of cultural connections to music and supports our diversity through exposing children to different genres of music and providing them with the opportunity to use different instruments. Mr. Kibler, we thank you for always showing us how you can level up, lean in, and sparkle on. And we appreciate your absolute love for music and our students. Spencer Kibler.
I love the animations, Dr. Berger.
Well, you know, you gotta bring a little language in.
Thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Would you like to say a few words?
Well, I would just like to say thank you for this. Music has made such an impact on my life and I'm just excited that I get to share it and provide all this for the amazing students in our district. Thank you.
Thank you.
And our second nominee is Karen Salo. Karen is nominated by a staff member at West Oak Elementary School, who was a famous seller. On her behalf, we're going to have Mr. Freiberger read the nomination. Welcome to add your own.
A little flair. As it were. Um, so yeah, I'm happy to be able to read from one of our staff members at WOOS. I know Karen is a wonderful speech path and she does so much more. So, first service, Karen provides speech and language services to all of her students and provides consultative services to fellow educators. Passion, so she did all the sparkle on, this is awesome. Passion, Karen is passionate about praising students who make even the smallest improvement in their expressive oral and written language skills. Advocacy, Karen speaks to other professionals in and out of District 76 to advocate for services as an educational tool and assistive devices for one of her students. Respect, Karen respects each student's feelings and listens with her ears and heart to their needs. Kindness, Karen shares a big smile and hug to all WOOS students when she works with them or just passing by in the hallway, even middle schoolers do. This is very true. Even saw it today. Love, Karen embodies the WOOS model of we love you, we care about you, and we're not a wolf pack without you. Every student, coworker, and parent feels loved and appreciated by Karen. Equity, Karen is fair and treats each student with respect. She also requests their best work when she sees them. Opportunity, Karen uses her instincts to determine students' needs and tracks down opportunities for each of them to thrive during speech. Nurture, Karen is calm, caring, loving, and to each and every student that she sees each day. Karen, you do go above and beyond in everything that you do. You go and apply anything that a student has an interest, even what cup head. How you related that to oceans and got them to visualize was really impressive and you really are a mainstay at our school. You do so much for everyone. So I'm really happy to present this to you. Thanks, Karen.
Thank you so much. I am okay, thank you.
Karen Spencer, please hang up for a few minutes. We have a really exciting presentation that's out the side of our staff. So our second presentation is our mid-year update on our postgraduate. In a courtroom in front of the class, we usually have staff coming. Here, labs, airboys of public school. So our professional advisory council, which is in a three-star company. Buildings have worked on this presentation and given I vote update on one, two, and three. And then insert Rogers and Mr. Hanson will give an update on both ones. I'm just going to do a quick review of where we are. Collaborative effort that everybody I know. Thank you all for being here tonight and your personal time in supporting district goals and opportunities. So our annual strategic priorities and goals. They've been the same for nine years, which has been awesome. So we can really have longevity growth and competency with academic excellence, professional excellence, operational excellence, financial excellence, and communication. And I think if you went and asked any one of our staff members, regardless of how long they've been in the district, they could reiterate those five goals. They may not know the specifics, but they know those are the five things that we prioritize. Everything district-wide. So our collaborative accountability, we have a consistent mission that we've updated to certain of two of our goals to make them very transparent for our community. We focus and prioritize on emotional health and safety. It's been a huge priority ever since the pandemic, not only for our students, but also for our staff. And we've measured that in our staff survey as well, as well as monthly opportunities for teachers to contribute on SEL. Collaborative voice, making sure that all voices are heard, which is why we have our staff here and make sure they have input on what what things are going well, what are things that we need to strengthen, and what things that we need to maybe stop doing. Again, shared ownership and leadership with everybody that's part of the table. That's where the professional advisory council are. They go back and they build leadership teams, they go back and they create levels, teams, and department teams. We get input, ideas, and feedback. So it's a continuous cycle of improvement. We prioritize communication. Not only are we heavily awarded and heavily branded, but we also have transparent, consistent, and continuous communication on a regular basis throughout the district. Making sure that everybody knows what's happening and they're staying up to date with information. Good news or informational news such like this, just that everybody has A, that they're informed, but they feel like they know what's going on. And again, that kind of supports all the things that we have with collaborative voice, shared leadership, and shared ownership. And then again, we reflect every hundred days. We do the leadership team, we do the support leadership team, and we do with the staff. So this is kind of our mid-year point of giving a summary of where we are, making sure that we have credibility and making sure we keep our standards for excellent size. So just a review, we updated kind of look of our mission and vision this year and we changed the board just a little bit in our mission. Stayed at preschool, one, which are preparing ourselves to be bright on learners, engagement community, and ready to navigate their world. So not just ready for the world, but also how to navigate our ever-changing world. That was the change that we made this year. One of the things we also prioritize is Sparkle On. It's a great brand, but what does it mean? And it's our core values, it's our culture, it's our mindset, as you saw, two staff members being recognized just tonight about how they carry on those core values and they embed them throughout their professional day here and also their personal interactions with staff. So I won't read them again because I feel like everybody understands what they are, but again, Sparkle On, that means something to each and every one of us. It's not just the goal, but the career. It actually means something. Portrait of excellence, we changed that also. We used to have a portrait of a graduate and we had a portrait of a professional. And we thought to be more relevant and to be more inclusive, that everybody should have these standards and it includes what our mission is of embracing power itself. So what we prioritize as adults, as well as students, as well as our community, is diversity, inclusion, individuality, individuality, self-advocacy, safety and welfare for our adults and our students, courage, kindness, leadership, compassion, and perseverance. And we excel at collaboration, critical thinking, problem-solving, growth mindset, and being a positive role. So with that, we have our five goals and I'll kind of transition and review the goals for everybody tonight. And then I'm going to ask each of the schools to come on up, just for the first slide. You state your name for the board and what you teach. And then also for our communities that is watching, but our first goal this year for academic excellence was to make sure that we know each student, each District 76 student by name, strength, and need, by improving their growth in English, language, art, and math, by strengthening social, emotional wellbeing, learning, and engagement, and by implementing a district-wide volunteer system. And you all can pull up if you want. It's totally up to you. And the time, Harvey. And I'm clicking for you guys, right?
Thank you. Hello, good evening. I'm Candace Rustrelly. I'm one of the general ed kindergarten teachers here at Diamond Lake School. For our priority one, academic excellence, we reflected on what we've been doing in order to achieve these goals. And for our ELA, our goal is now we're at 80% of our students who achieve the STAR projected growth by participating in the balanced literacy and the cognitively complex tasks. We've been working very hard on those goals, especially with our balanced literacy program that we have been implementing the last few years. And now our new Inspires Math Program that has allowed us to level up the kids' thinking on how math is on a day-to-day. We have had specialty events school-wide to engage students in new and innovative ways. An example is this fall, we had a Harvest Hoot Nanny. And it was a mixed group, but by grade level, we had ELA standards and math standards that we created activities for. And the kids got a chance to mix within the different classrooms along with working with other teachers. And one of our fun points to the Harvest Hoot Nanny was actually Mr. Kibler dressed up as Johnny Appleseed. So that was a little bit of a hit and he gave some fun facts about Johnny Appleseed. For our PLC meetings, we've been bringing student work share. And this is to enhance knowing our students by name, by strength, and by need. And the teachers are bringing work that we've seen in our classroom that have either shown strengths, have shown progress, and also the needs of our students. And we collaborate then with one another to what we can do to help support our students and celebrate the strengths that they have also shown. We have new models for our PBIS that are school-wide. We have, this year, we implemented a monthly assembly with the whole school. We have a PBIS team of teachers who do a short little skit. We focus on a skill that is needed in the Diamond Lake School, may it be keeping our hands to ourselves, being respectful. And we do a skit, we involve the kids, we engage them, and then they help us kind of problem solve. And another thing that we've been doing for our PBIS to work on being respectful, responsible, and safe is that we have new incentives for the students to work toward. We have new cup cards they are given when a teacher recognizes them following one of the respect, responsible, or safe behaviors. We have the Burger Wall of Fame where teachers recognize students showing above and beyond positive behavior in the classroom and they get their picture up on the wall when you come into Diamond Lake School with Dr. Berger and now Polly is part of that. And just recently, we've had our first class that's been POD. And what that means is that this first one was a class that was recognized by the specials teachers. They collaborated together and they talked about which classroom showed them the best behavior, positive and respectfulness among one another. And one of the second grade dual classrooms got pod for the first time and they earned a day with our therapy dog. And so last but not least, one of what we've been working on to achieve our academic excellence is to bring in our therapy dog into the classrooms. Students can read with her. They earn a day to spend time with her. And she's been a very positive addition to our building. So, thank you.
Joanne was already fifth grade dual language. So at West Oak Intermediate School, we had, we increased our focus on aligning our assessments this year. And we're using Renaissance to help us recognize the students' needs and to incorporate the focus skills in our daily practices. We're also noticing a tremendous growth with our FNP assessments and using the FNP system with our guided reading groups. And about 50%, more than 50% of the students are having breached their great level goal, which is awesome. In math, we're using our new invisions program and we are aligning our formative assessments and adjusting our daily practices to allow students to discuss and problem solve. And they are loving the manipulatives and all the new things that have been put into place for them.
I'm short. I'm Vanessa Nambo and I'm the Spanish reading specialist. We've also had monthly school assemblies focusing on our Sparkle On attributes as well as student of the month. During our monthly school assemblies, student-created possum cards. We have also started implementing a T-chart of majors and minors. Daily affirmations during, in the classroom, during our morning announcements, including some in English and in Spanish. No somos una manada de lobos sin ti. We love saying that. And we've also had a direct instruction of our functional behavior assessments and the BIPS to help us adjust and goal set. And we are very focused on our SEL.
I asked for moral support. Hi, everybody. I'm Susan Borkowski. I teach fifth through eighth grade choir and sixth through eighth grade general music. So addressing priority one at the middle school, we're seeing that students in all tiers are showing encouraging growth as we're looking at our data. We gave our student SEL survey and we're also looking at that data and using those results to help guide our practices. Things that we want to continue, things we want to reflect on or maybe change. We are using regular assemblies that are centered around our PBIS and SEL initiatives as well as our academic progress and then our school-wide climate and culture. Some of our positive feedback that we're using to incentivize the students, we have our positive referrals which can be given out by staff, by students. Students can give them to each other. Students can give them to staff. Staff give them out. So everybody has the opportunity to recognize each other and encourage each other. We have our students of the month where each team is selecting a student every month to recognize and present to at the assembly that month. And then our trimester challenges, we just had our our second trimester challenge day where students have the opportunity to earn a reward by getting to choose what they want their reward to be. So rather than giving everybody the same incentive, we have different rooms, like we had a cosmetology room, we did have movie rooms, we had a chess room. So student interests were really incorporated when we were trying to incentivize them both for academics and behavior. We are enhancing our knowledge of each student's name, strength, and need. We talked a lot about kind of how we were each doing this, but so we're incorporating small group instruction, giving students voice and choice in our classrooms, working to make personal connections and building mutually respectful relationships. And those are things that we agreed that we, as staff, are doing in our own rooms and hopefully throughout the building as well. And we are improving our depth of knowledge by offering tasks that are authentic and relevant by connecting instruction to student backgrounds and drawing on our culturally responsive teaching knowledge that we've been working on. Thank you.
All right. Priority two is professional excellence. And we're taking on the task this year, level two status of our honor of pyrology. You know, last year, we earned level one status by having a safe and supportive collaborative culture. And that is the foundation of the next four steps in the level, in five levels that we are trying to achieve. So this year, we're going to implement, building the district, continue to implement, I should say, building district leadership walkthroughs, focusing more also on strengthening our instructional coaching program, strengthening our social, emotional, bringing engagement for all staff. And also implementing. So now we are going to. Maybe not. We're going to have Diamond Lake come back. Just ignore that. I thought there was two slides for level two, or priority two.
Hi, my name is Lauren Anderson. I'm one of the blended pre-K teachers at Diamond Lake School. In regards to priority two, some of the things that are happening at Diamond Lake is we celebrate all the time. We celebrate at our monthly team meetings. We always start with anything professional or personal that you want to celebrate. We always start our weekly team meetings that way, along with our staff meetings, I think I said. And then we also just celebrate all the fun things that are happening, like Nurses Day and Learning Associate Day. For the holidays, we had a holiday potluck at one of the staff members' houses. We also just have a really supportive family culture in our building. You can go to anybody and and talk to them about something that's happening in your life or something that's happening in your classroom. We're very, very close knit in our building. Our BLT created our school improvement plan and shared it with our staff at the beginning of the school year to establish those common goals. Walkthroughs are conducted three times a year and the great thing is the feedback is right away via email. It's just in a quick Google form. So it's easy to read and it's right away, which is awesome. Teachers are provided the opportunity to observe one another and learn new strategies. This is Rustrelly, just came into my room today to observe what was going on. So it's really wonderful to be able to see what your colleagues are doing. It's one thing to work alongside them, but to really see what they're teaching and how they're teaching it really gives you a new perspective. really gives you a new perspective. Professional development is provided through the learning, the instructional coaches during our dedicated PLC meetings each month. A lot of that is happening due to the, the new math curriculum. So the math coach is really breaking that down for the staff members. And I know kindergarten got a new writing curriculum, so they're really helping during those meeting times. Ongoing evaluations are occurring through the Danielson model. And our data meetings are occurring monthly to, to measure and compare student progress and take necessary instructional adjustments. Thank you.
All right. And we also have staff recognition and celebrations during our monthly meetings. We do staff shout outs. We also do something called the Wolf Pack Trophy, where there's a staff member that's selected and then that staff member passes it to another staff member the next meeting and so forth. We also have a sunshine committee, which celebrates staff members during bridal shower, baby shower, Nurses Day, learning associates, admin. We also do learning and leadership walkthroughs where we have Mr. Freiberger do the walkthroughs and he gives us very good feedback. We have achieved Marzano level one status and we are currently working on level two. And we are sharing progress on how we are achieving our school improvement angles.
Hello, I'm Katie Levy. I teach STEAM three, five. So this year, we're also focusing on personal learning pilots and classroom procedures. So for example, we had a fourth grade teacher whose kids loved graphic novels. So she actually in her library made a graphic novel section that's written by all of her fourth graders. We're really working with our instructional coaching. They're visible, they're open, supportive. We're gathering resources among grade levels, among content areas to vertically align everything we have and let everyone know what they have access to. Along with that, we're doing kind of plug and play playlists so that you have kind of a roadmap to what everything is and where everything is and what you have. Teachers also informal, informal evaluations as well as the walkthroughs. PLC meetings or our professional learning communities, meetings are theme based according to what content area you have at the time and helps with collaboration for teams. So for example, this month, the specials team is focusing on the specials STEAM Olympics, which is going to be up and coming. And then we also during those meetings, talk about the functional behavior assessments as well as students' behavior or implementation plans so that we're all on the same page and we kind of understand what everyone needs.
Hello, I'm Hope Sohn. I'm the art teacher at West Oak Middle School. A lot are similar to what the intermediate side does, but we do the staff recognition and the celebrations during our monthly meetings. We have Willie the Wolf that is passed around. It's nice to see staff members have some kind words to say to other staff members at our staff meetings. And it's now turned into a little bit of a competition amongst the staff members. We have Sparkle Squad that is very similar to West Oak Intermediate. We just call it Sparkle Squad. When it's someone's birthday, we surprise them with a little trinket on their desk. And we do when someone's getting married or having a baby, et cetera. We like to celebrate all those important milestones in our staff members. Learning walkthroughs, we got a lot of feedback from Mrs. Pacararo as well as Mr. Peterson. We take those suggestions to heart. We, we, we're, we're okay with the suggestions. We love to hear their opinions and we like to try new things in our classrooms. We are Marzano level one status. We are going for Marzano two status as well, which is very exciting. Sharing progress towards achieving our SIP goals, instructional coaching. During our PLC meetings, we work with the instructional coach. She gives us some wonderful ideas that we could introduce, especially in our encore classrooms, which is extremely helpful. Teacher informal and formally evaluations during our PLC meetings. We incorporate cultural response practices and we include time for collaboration with our teams. It's always wonderful to hear what's happening in all of our other classrooms, like Katie had mentioned, just to go observe what's going on in the other classrooms when we get a chance. It's great to see. We love to try and incorporate those same items in the classroom. Support, staff support one another by sharing strategies, stepping into other classrooms and continued collaboration, what I just said, and also staff developed individual instructional goals.
All right, our third goal or priority agency structuring, our PLCs are professional. Focus on the multi-tiered system of support process. Utilizing, utilizing and also applying the data. I know that's been a focus for the board, getting a data system in place. But this year, we've got the data system in place. It's fear free. And now what are we doing in that data? So really, what is in that data to make decisions with EduClimber, which is our warehouse. And also using the student product and forming that instruction practice. But we're using the data and actually using that example of what students are doing.
Okay, Caitlin Cairns. I'm one of the special education teachers at Diamond Lake. According to a survey that we took in the winter, 70% of our staff strongly agree or agree that EduClimber is used to make instructional decisions. As it was mentioned earlier, at our team meetings this year, we are bringing student work. Again, that work could be strengths or areas of improvement for students. And it just leads to more discussions of how we can best meet their needs in the classroom. And we use a lot of assessment data to guide curriculum and instruction and create roadmaps. At the data that we use are benchmarks, progress monitoring, unit assessments, informals and observations.
Boys, we're also using EduClimber. We use it to look at trends during our PLC time. It helps us to differentiate and better meet student needs during our small group instruction for reading and math. And we've seen a huge difference with being able to bring it back and work with our interventionist and just talk about the different things that are happening and the different things that we're doing to help a certain student.
We're also annotating lessons based on student needs. So that's having the flexibility to realize midway through or during the course of the unit that we need to maybe be flexible and change something. So for example, I learned that some of my fifth graders have a huge aversion to acrylic paint. So we went watercolor. But just having that ability to be flexible and know it's okay to change. We're also still focused on our student target portfolios, which have moved to Google Sites this year, which is really awesome to see students develop those tech skills to be able to navigate a website and create their own, as well as the specials team is still doing their specials portfolio to kind of highlight all the work that students are really proud of and feel successful with.
Thanks. I am a lot shorter. Okay, so we at West Oak Middle School are also using EduClimber to guide our instructional practices. And we're kind of looking at that to kind of help us within the classroom, which is really nice when we get together within our teams. We articulate within our teams and we obviously center around student growth and their progress. And we develop a collaborative, within our teams, we've been working together to work and transition towards our standard base grading, which we will be starting next year. So it's been a process. We've been chunking and it's been really helpful to do that way. Oh, sorry. Mary Lozano, West Oak Middle School and seventh grade SLA and sixth grade ELA.
All right. None of this would be possible if we didn't have a priority of high school excellence. So I am going to, Dr. Rogers is going to share his progress. This year, we are negotiating or currently in the process of having petitions to negotiate a grant by Department Agreement, developing a new five-year facility plan.
Okay, thank you very much. So yeah, well, there's a couple of different, I guess, artifacts, you call it, to support, you know, the district's financials, health and safety. So we are always kind of a year behind when we get our annual financial report. So we did receive that. We received a 3.8 designation score regarding our financial profile. And that's a previous score that we did have. So it's essentially the highest rating we can receive without having less borrowing obligations. So because of our long-term bond. So it's a great rate and it really just rates our cash on hand, annual expenditures versus fund balance ratio, things like that. So that's why I wanted to tie one of our goals this year to maintaining an operating fund balance ratio of 105%. We were a little bit below that, so this would just require us, you know, just to maintain strong fiscal practices and have slight surpluses here. So as of December, we are tracking and have, anticipating having a slight surplus pending some year end obligations that come in. So we're on track in terms of our expenses and the revenues received. A five-year facility plan is, is well underway from being developed right now. We're bidding out and getting estimated costs. So we anticipate next month, meeting as a facility committee and discussing some of our projects that are proposed, both short and long term. And we'd like to, you know, rate those and see what direction we'd like to go for some of our projects. But some exciting stuff out there, some boring stuff that goes in the rough, some exciting instructional items we'd love to be able to propose to you. So we'll be reaching out shortly with that. And as Dr. Charmelus said, we will begin preliminary discussions for our collective bargaining agreements. So we hope to bring some news and progress updates to that soon.
And priority five, again, something that I call is sharing out the information to ensure everyone is informed, included and safe in our communities by getting the information to the excellent patients. Hand it over to the district minutes, but our goals have been cultivated and being aware in order to promote the mission, vision, values, core values, excuse me, District 76. So our first goal in this area was to develop a parent volunteer handbook. And I know that was feedback that board, the board gave us last year. How do we increase and improve and strengthen our involvement in the district, especially at pandemic? We could start having community members appearing back in the building. Continue to provide and school specific outreach and service programs. And Mr. Hanson and I worked with Mrs. Calderon to get the data for what she's been doing with the community liaison department and I'll hope to continue to be responsible for student staff.
Absolutely. All right. So for the first measurable evidence, we do have a finished parents volunteer handbook that's, has been completed and been implemented that outlines who can volunteer, what volunteers might do. We might not do responsibilities, procedures, so on and so forth. That has been completed and has been implemented. Regarding our 23, 24 parent engagement survey, we're happy to say 90% of our parents reported that the district staff and leadership team uphold the mission, vision and core values, which is exactly the benchmark we're looking at, we set out for, for our goal. And last but not least, Mrs. Calderon also provided our organized, has organized at this point, seven events, including mobile food pantries, supply drives, winter clothing drives and much more. That served a total of 957 families and that continues to grow. And in addition to that, every year outside of that number, she provides a survey to our families that, to obtain student needs yearly.
And what you go, two things I would say about this. First of all, our impact, our work, our faith, our confidence, our scale and accomplish. After that, your personal leadership. And then also you're looking at that number 957, while we don't even have 957 students in our district. But what we're so proud of is the partnership that Mrs. Calderon and our staff have had with everybody throughout the Montalife community and Lake County. So not only do we serve and provide resources and support for our families, but we also do it throughout Lake County. Really proud of that. So this is a great combination of what teamwork is. And you know, I'm a big person on vote, so coming together, which we did nine years ago to put this all together was the beginning. And then keeping it together, which we've done, it's progress. But really the success comes from all of us working together. And I want to thank the board for all of their support and leadership and their faith and confidence in us as a leadership team and a staff. And the staff for coming tonight and sharing their voices and the progress that we made. A team who every day we support and build this. Because without all of you working together, we wouldn't be as successful as we are. And we appreciate continuous improvement. No one here is stopping and saying, all right, we've done enough, we've got 90% or we've gotten to 92 or kids are growing. So we can kind of take our foot off the pedal. No, I think, as we said earlier, the level of leaning in and sparking on continues. And I think that that's everybody's mantra, compassion. So with that, I know we've presented you with a lot of information. We have some staff members here and our research community members are here to answer any questions or if you have any feedback.
I, I would second that and, you know, to the administrative team, to the teaching team and, you know, back to all of your constituencies. Thank you for looking out for each child each day and, and helping them to reach their potential.
Any other questions? Thank you again, all of you for coming. We appreciate you. Spencer and Karen, I think we're going to take a quick picture back there. And you're welcome to stay, but we all know that you have busy days tomorrow. So go home and get some rest too.
All right, that concludes our presentations. We'll continue now with our business agenda. We have one, two, three, four items for action tonight. The first action item is the omnibus, omnibus boat agenda. Items under the omnibus boat agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. If any one board member, staff, administrator or citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled from the omnibus boat agenda and voted on separately. Be resolved that the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the omnibus boat agenda items A through D as listed. Have a motion to approve. Yes. Next item for action is the personnel report. Be resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves.
Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. We have one hire. We have a motion to approve.
Ms. Bayless, yes, Mr. Becker? Ms. Angarola, yes, Mr. Pundella?
Yes. And our next item is to approve the press plus issue 113 updates. I don't have to read all of them, right?
No, no, you can say.
There is. Hold eyes. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Services Press from the Illinois Association of School Boards, I A S B. And whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the committee of the whole meeting on February 6, 2024. Therefore, be it resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in I A S B press issue 113. May I have a motion to approve?
Second, Mr. Becker? Ms. Bayless, yes, Ms. Angarola? Mr. Pundella?
Yes. And I think this is our last action item. The resolution to approve executive minutes.
You can.
I feel like we discussed that last.
Was it before? Yeah, it was before and after.
Yes, okay. So there are two.
Yes, on the same day.
Okay. Be resolved, the Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education approves the release of closed session minutes from board meetings held between July 2023 and December 2023. The list of executive session minutes is as follows. Two from July 11th, 23, August 8, 2023, September 12, 2023, October 24th, 2023 and November 14, 2023. May I have a motion to approve?
Ms. Bayless, yes, Mr. Becker? Ms. Angarola?
Yes. That includes our, concludes our action items. Is there any board discussion?
Not at this time.
We had no freedom of information requests. The notices and communications, there are a couple of pieces there, several pieces there from C D O. And then our highlights, the diamond dish as always is wonderful, adorable.
Entertaining.
Entertaining. And of course, our very own principal of the year for Lake County Elementary Principal, Dr. Berger. Congratulations again. And that concludes our business agenda. Now, open the floor to public comments for non-agenda items. Are there any? Being none, we move to others. Are there any others? And seeing as we are no longer going into executive session, I will take a motion to adjourn.
Okay. Mr. Becker? Ms. Bayless, yes, Ms. Angarola?
Yes. Thank you all.
Thank you.